We're in recording of members present and absent.
Barton.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
And Hamilton is absent.
Open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view in the office of the superintendent.
Item number three, consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of the following: the discussion and consideration of approval of the following. Any addition of any items of new business to the agenda?
No new business.
3.2, the minutes of the February 3 regular meeting, the approval of the finance report, approval of purchase orders and conferences for the following funds as referenced. 3.5, approval of the extra duty assignments. 3.6, approval of the activity fund reports. 3.7, approval of the activity fund fundraisers. 3.8, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers. 3.9, approval of the child nutrition report. 3.10, approval of the board policies and procedures. And 3.11, the declared any items of surplus. Superintendent, we'll start with the minutes. Anybody have any changes to the minutes? Okay. About the finance report?
Um, I just want to pull investments up here. Some of the investments are starting to renew, yet be reinvested. Interest rates are down from where they were a few months ago. We're seeing a little bit of a drop in interest rates. It's more market stuff. We're talking a tenth of a point maybe, not a whole lot. We do have everything invested between 4.23 and 5.2%. I think last month we were talking about four and a half and five and a quarter. So it hasn't dropped a whole lot, but I think that's pretty indicative of what the market's doing right now. I mean, the general fund, total investments, the general fund is $6,996,000. The building fund has got $2,969,000. So that's a total investment between your operations and of $9,365,000. Child nutrition fund has $190,000 invested. You've still got $11,000 left over in the sinking fund from an old bond. And there's $260,000 in the gift fund. So total investment from all the funds, $10,426,000. Look at our, our general fund. General fund revenues, it's super hard to see on these spreadsheets we have.
Are they attached here?
Yes, should be. In the general fund, at the end of February, we've collected $15,563,965. For the month of February, we collected $579,132,000. That's about $588,188 less than February of 2024.
It's about how much?
About $580,000.
Thank you.
Just month to month, it shows like a 70% decrease, but that's, I don't like percentages because it's relative to how much you started with. But it's not too surprising. In December, we had a 40% increase in, I have the wrong questions. Talked to Rachel today, a lot of people pay their taxes earlier. They were able to distribute the money quicker. So if you get taxes off one pile, if you get the money in December, you're not going to get it before. So with that, last year, we were still collecting the remnants of ESAR money and some of that we didn't have this year. So it's a little bit apples and oranges when you compare it year to year. But since December, we have had an increase of collections in the general fund of $183,492. So we're staying relatively quiet. We're shaving just a little bit up maybe. We'll see with the next four months. Building fund revenue, the end of February. Building fund revenue, end of February, we collected $4,568,212. For the month, we collected $9,000, I'm sorry, $9,756. That shows, it shows a decrease of $876,000 from last February. I think there's something not, I'll talk to Rachel about today's, when you go back. I don't know if he's got a payment in late or something's going on, but I don't trust that totally. You would think if our general fund's showing an increase, building fund would show the increase with it. There's a few things that have changed that. Probably go back and double check that.
Thank you.
The year-to-date, we've collected $4,568,212. That's still an increase of $7,682 on the year. Okay, so month to month can get a little scary if you don't look at the whole picture, but looking, looking year-to-date, we're up in collections in general building fund. Looking at our expenditure comparisons. We've tried to hedge just a little bit in case we are short of revenues. Expenditure comparisons, we've uncovered $364,442 less in the general fund than we did this time last year. So we've uncovered over a quarter of a million less. We've paid out $177,645 less in the general fund than we had this time last year. And so even if we're short of collections, we're not spending as much either. So we're trying to hedge that. Now the building fund, we've uncovered $387,000 more, and we paid out $388,000 more in the building fund. But remember, we took some money out of our savings, out of our investments to purchase the buses instead of leasing. That was a big upfront expense, and we should see gains in the future. And then we also paid off the activity bus when we first purchased it. That was a big expense that we had planned on maybe leasing out and just situation warrants and just go and pay for it. So that was in the neighborhood of $350,000. So as you can see, the big, big, big chunk of that $388,000 is in those buses. And we've had some things like, in our purchase orders, there's $21,000 for heating air units at the middle school, a freezer unit. Mechanical things break, you have to fix them. So we'll talk about that at that point. Anyway, that's what our expenditures and revenues look like right now. Can we read that?
Yeah.
Purchase orders. I feel like I'm waiting on the next click. Most of the expenditures are normal for this time of year. Just draw attention to three or four of them. Number 332 was for $2,500. That was to Keller and Sovereign. They manage our E-Rate funds. And we're doing a lot of E-Rate stuff right now and applying for the category two stuff. And the USF will hold things, make for internet, pay for internet stuff. Number 333 is, it's just $256,000, but I wanted to draw attention to a fallout library company for library books at Lincoln. So we're starting to evaluate and buy, purchase new library books for next year. Number 334 is to Quaid school products for the purchase of gold bug pins for our honor students. That was $1,805. And then number 337, it's actually Amazon, but it is for the purchase of our laser engraver for our ticket. It was $2149. So, now the general fund, and we only had, what is that? 10 expenditures out of the general fund. So, really fairly efficient amount of money. I'll skip the payroll for the followers. Same, same. Our building fund, it was only one expense. That was two treat solutions for district maintenance supplies. I think it was $1,000. Pretty normal stuff there. And then child nutrition fund, I just told you we had $21,000 in repairs. The air conditioner is on the heater, heating unit, heating area for the kitchen. And then the freezer's the one that's out of current funding building. So we had, oh, they were kind of getting on, slapping our hand a little bit for not spending our carryover in child nutrition. We had built too much. And we had, that was about $29,000, just had $21,000 in repairs in the kitchen. So I guess the State Department will like this again. A little bit. I was glad it was there. It protects our general building.
Yes, it does.
Anyway, they got, so child nutrition number two, the tough fire and safety for the kids inspection. Great on mechanical on the next two purchase orders for HVAC and freezer repairs.
Okay, thank you. Item number 3.5 is the extra duty assignments.
Just had one little change. Mary Tyree had her, we had an open assisted track position. Mary's going to help the guys with, the coaches with track, the high school level this spring. So need to add her to that extra duty.
Activity fund reports.
Now the activity fund, again, it's pretty, pretty normal kind of stuff. Majority of it is, back to almost all of it is basketball game concessions. We had, let's say $10,000 deposit for the donation we approved last month. And then Ben wrapped up their fundraiser with $5,870 in deposits. Other than that, it's tickets and gates and concession.
We didn't have any in our cap transfers. Then our 3.9, our child nutrition report.
Look at bill counts. We served 83 more breakfasts and 456 more lunches than we did in January. Which is kind of neat because February's a shorter month. But our counts are up across the board there. Revenue-wise. Revenue-wise, February, we're revenueing $48,372 less than we did in February 24. But again, that's, that's really depend on when people pay their lunch bills and things like that. So I tried to look too hard at just the month, look at the year-to-date. Year-to-date, we've revenueed about $16,56 more. Our lunch counts are staying pretty flat. Our lunch prices have stayed relatively flat. They've gone up a little bit, not significantly. So that just means we're probably collecting a little more than we have in the past. Child nutrition.
Do we need policies or we don't have any items of surplus? So we'll move on to the administration report. We did, we don't, no, we need to. Again, I thought we did, for some reason.
Question on the building fund. Do we need to, do we need to table it if it's, if we're not sure on that number or?
No, it's just the reports. The expenditures of this, that's really a business item.
We'll continue to pursue that.
Yes, I will continue to pursue that. And it might be what it is. Tax collection's been kind of weird this year. Like a lot of people paid upfront and paid the full amount in December where, in the past, and I've even done in the past, I'll pay half in December and half in March. Still expecting a jump in tax collections in March. Or well, we are April, we're going to talk about it. And there's so many other factors like ESAR. There's just a lot of things. The target protest is in there. That's going to cause the general fund to be higher than the building.
Do we need to motion for the, for the consent agenda? Do we need to approve 3.1 through 3.11 as presented?
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
And now, item number four.
Start with Washington. From basic update as usual on enrollment. We lost a couple of students, but we're pretty much the same on our numbers. So you can handle it up there. We have 235 total. I'll go through our activities for March. This week is Dr. Sue Sui. So we have lots of reading and dress up days going on for that. We also have parent teacher conferences this week, starting tomorrow, and then we have the next Tuesday. And our goal at Washington is always 100%. So you can bet that our teachers and Ms. Michelle call parents, we make contact with them if we haven't heard something, to schedule a conference. And we're always willing to work around schedules. And if they can't come on one of those nights, we accommodate that. And many of the teachers will meet with them at other times. So that's coming up. We have spring pictures on Wednesday. We also have our book fair going on this week, which is very fun. We have an awards assembly happening next Thursday before we go on spring break. Then we have spring break, which is crazy soon. And we have early pre-spring enrollment every year. So that's something that we open up to the community if they want to put their child's name into our preschool program. We do limit that to 60 students every year. So that will occur after spring break. And we'll have something in the newspaper about that, advertising all the things that they need to bring over spring break. So be on the lookout for that. We'll also put something out on Facebook. And we have early dismissal this month too, on March 26. And then I brought you some writing samples of Washington because they're just adorable, but also they are very important. So I'll just let you pass these around. Pass those around. So what you're going to look at here is, the first one is a If I Was President writing. Yeah, and it's up there too. Forgot I attached those. So I'm just going to, while you're looking at those, kind of go over a little bit. This is, you know, early writing, of course. So there's so much that goes into the writing process at this level. And our teachers spend so much time on it, but they really start with their fine motor skills at first. They practice their name always first. We do have a handwriting curriculum that we do. They focus a lot on upper and lowercase letter formation at the start of the year. And then they'll kind of move into phase two, which is correctly forming a sentence, using an uppercase letter at the beginning, and making sure you use the punctuation at the end. They have a daily fix-it where they will look at a sentence that has incorrect punctuation or incorrect capitalization, and they'll have to fix that. Sight words are something that we always want to spell correctly because they're not always words that we can sound out. So those are things, words that we want to be able to look at and recognize right away. They work on finger spaces between words. They work on phonetically spelling other words, especially when they're in kindergarten. So like president, you could see that in your sample there. But phonetically...
I read it fine.
Because it makes sense. Because our English language is not always phonetically spelled correctly. Yeah, exactly. But, so they're cute, but also there's, you know, meaning to having them phonetically spelled word because we mostly just want them to make sure they know what each letter sound is. Then typically, they'll move on to journaling. And that's what, these were first grade examples, that they do this from the start of the year. I know, she's rocking it. I know, that was amazing. But, so journaling is something they do more independently. And they do a lot of small group writing with the teacher or with just a small group. So of course, and that, you know, translates into independent writing. And then as they get into first grade, it's a little more learning the spelling of words, the rules of spelling, you know, silent E and things like that. So anyway, a little writing for you to see. Any questions? Got anything?
I jump on, I step on the road.
Yes. Okay, I'm not, oh, when I told you I was going to song and dance before, I'm sorry. I'm on time. One of these days, I'll surprise you. Well, I kind of do, actually. I, I'll start with enrollment. Enrollment total of 151, second grade 89, third grade 62. I'm going to stop telling my enrollment because I've gone down every month. I don't know why, what's happening. We've had, we've just had an unusual amount moving out right now. So maybe I'll get some more moving out. When I came in here last time, we were just getting, we had just performed at the middle school, our Longfellow and I, and we're just getting ready to go to the high school. And I tried to put video, drop it in here, and I was having a lot of technical issues. So we got pictures. So that's where my song and dance was going to come in, and it just didn't translate.
Their national anthem was there.
But they did an excellent job. We're second and third graders sang the national anthem before the girls varsity game. And that was on February 4. And they did a phenomenal job. And I have the video. I'd be happy to share. I have it on my phone. I just couldn't get it to download because it was too big. And then the second graders performed halftime of the girls' game, and third graders performed halftime of the boys' game. And so Ms. Klein worked with students for the national anthem, did an excellent job. Mrs. Widdit worked with the students for the basketball skills. And they just did a phenomenal job too. And each routine was different this year. She put in extra work. So the second grade looked different than the third grade. And as you can see, they weren't just standing there dribbling. I mean, they were on their knees, they were on their bottoms, they were leaning into it from the side. I was, they did a great job. And they had a lot of fun. And if you watch, like, there was very few balls that got away from them. I was really proud of them. They did a great job. It was fun to watch. And I have the video of both of those performances. Also, I'd be happy to share if you didn't get a chance to see it. We are currently in the middle of our spell-a-thon, much needed spell-a-thon at Longfellow fundraiser. Students took a 50-word test. We broke it into two chunks, two 25-word tests. And then they went and raised money. They can do two different ways. They can get a flat donation, or people can pledge for a word that they got correct. They would donate a dollar or whatnot. And so we are currently collecting the money. We are trying something new. We were able to tap into the PayPal, the existing PayPal account that the school, the district already has. And I was be able to, I was able to do a donation off of that. And so we're collecting money online for the first time. And that's going really well. It's a little learning curve, but it's going really well. I'm really excited that we were able to provide that. Just they, I created a QR code. And so they were able to, every packet had a QR code. They could scan into that the kid's name that they were donating to. And I just go in one place and find the money. So it's been great.
PayPal, but no videos. It's okay.
Money, but no, yeah.
Technology, it's all technology.
But yes, I have, yes, I'm proud of the QR codes, you know, I've talked about it every time. So our students can win individual prizes based on how much money they collect. And then we have some big prizes where the top three earners get to go on a shopping spree and to lunch with me. And if they raise $15,000 total, which we're only at $5,500, we got to keep raising, but I have faith, we're going to have a school-wide water balloon fight. I know, this will be exciting. My teachers actually came up with that idea. That was a new idea this year. And then the top earning class teacher will have to kiss a hip. So we've got a lot of fun activities around this fundraiser to help promote, not, I mean, it is giving us money, but also promoting academics with this. Alphalfa Electric Cooperative, they came in, did their safety around electricity program. They've done this annually at Longfellow. I think they were already doing it when I came in, as long as I can remember. It's just a good reminder of how electricity works and how to be safe around it. It's a great program. They do it annually in our building. They did that on the 20th. And then ad in the classroom, the high school ad students. I think this is the second year they've been doing, the second or third, I think it's second. And they reached out, I mean, the kids all do it themselves. They reach out and call Mrs. Graves to set up times. And they come about once a month, and they meet with our third grade students, and they do a different ad topic. And I haven't really talked about that, but it's neat, it's neat that those older kids come down. And then towards the younger kids, they've got, they pet like goats before livestock, and they get to do lots of different things. And so on the 20th, 26th, they talked about crops with our students. And so they always, the kids always look forward to that. And then just kind of some upcoming things in March. The big thing, we have kind of a lot of the same things, the parent teacher conferences, Dr. Sue's weeks, spring pictures. The big thing I know our kids are looking forward to is the BB gun safety is the end of March. And that's always a big thing. It starts, they start talking about in Washington and kindergarten, but they start practicing in first grade and go all the way up through fifth grade. And our students really enjoy that. We live in a community that there's going to be guns in their homes, or they're going to go to a home that has a gun. We want them to know, one, you shouldn't touch it, one. But if you do go hunting, do those things with family, the safety, how it's used. And then they get a two days of practice. They're little targets, and they really enjoy it. So those are kind of the big things going on right now.
I have a question. Did I miss you being dumped?
I'm waiting. I reached, I reached, I did reach out to Evan about, hey, you know, my kids are waiting for us to be dumped, you know?
I don't want to miss that.
We kind of joked about, just let's just get it over with and do the polar plunge and be done. But no, we have not done it yet. I'll let you know.
You should probably livestream that on Facebook.
I think we shall.
No, I'm not. It'll be a shorter video. Maybe I can upload it.
Thank you. One for the record.
Want to skip link? Can I go to mine? Okay.
Jenny's gone. She had the family, kind of here on base. So I want to take care of family, and we take care of this. Current enrollment in Lincoln right now is 158 students, 4381, 5377. They went on field trips. We said they were successful, and everybody had a lot of fun. They're also doing the BB gun safety. So we want to thank Jase Klein, one of our heroes, and members of the Alba Police Department for assisting students in the BB Gun Safety Week. Take congratulations to the fourth grade academic team participants. Ellie Winters, Bella Newton, Wade Tucker, Sequel Graves, Taylor Byers, and Colin Heaton. Second attendance at work completed celebration day. Their second attendance at work completed celebration day was Friday, February 21st. It's kind of coming up, spring pictures on March 4th. Parent teacher conferences, March 4th through 11th. Mrs. White has organized a mindfulness day for March 6th. 13th is AR party. Students who earn AR points will go to the ARC for a fun day with lots of activities and snacks. And then pride assembly at 8:30. Let's see, some pictures of things the kiddos are doing this last month.
Okay, I have no pictures this time, but you know, I'm sorry to let you down. Okay, current enrollment, we are at 217, sixth grade is 67, seventh grade 74, eighth grade 76. You know, I love to see, you know, the Washington writing samples and stuff. I think Ms. Anderson could attest that maybe the middle schools wouldn't quite be as entertaining at times.
I mean, you could study them. You could study them.
You never know what you're going to get. Sometimes it's great. I will say some things that went on this last month at the middle school. We had 16 students participate in a spelling bee on February 4th. That was great fun. We had, our top three participants were Jada Green, Anna Kelly, and Josie Melton. They went multiple rounds, and Josie Melton was the winner. If you remember, she won last year and got to go down to Oklahoma City to the Thunder. They did a whole spelling bee. They actually canceled that this year. They are not doing it there at the, it's not put on by the Thunder this year. But she qualified for, she did a regional... But she qualified for, she did a regional online, it's really crazy. You know, it used to be you went to different districts, and you had to do all these little, you know, little school spelling bees. They do it online now. And I, you know, you have to pick out the word, I think, that's spelled correctly, I think is how it works. It's, it's kind of interesting. But she did, she, so she qualified for the Scripps Final Regional Bee at OCCC, and she will be traveling there on, let's see, yeah, on March 8th. She will go and participate in that. And if she were to be the winner, then she would be able to go on to the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC. So we're hoping.
Watch that, that makes me nervous. The Scripps National on TV.
It's, yeah, it's a little bit, a little bit intense. Yes. So, yeah, she, she does a, she does a great job, and she loves it. So, yeah, I think it's great. Our middle school choir concert attended the OSSAA district contest hosted at Northwestern. That was on Tuesday, February 25th. The choir received a rating of good. Three junior high soloists also competed with their, with their individual solos. Joplin Bratt received superior, Fern Evans superior, and Lila Schmidt received an excellent. That's, that's huge for me, when you have middle school kids that are going to get up and do solos in, in front of judges, that's, that's really hard. You know, one of the things that I put down on here is, we went and talked to Lincoln Schools about enrollment, so we, you know, went around to the classrooms and talked to them, had them fill out their forms. And when we talk about vocals, they're like, oh, I don't want to do that, I might have to do, you know, a solo. And we're like, no, 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 it's just a choice. But I think that's great when kids, you know, have that option, and, you know, obviously they did a fabulous job. On February 13th, we took the eighth grade students to the tech center, and they went out and toured all of the programs out there. The kids always love doing that, seeing what the options are. Sometimes, for some of our students, it gives them a little bit of light. Yeah, a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. Sometimes they get bogged down in their classes, and it can be a real motivator when they're like, okay, well, maybe I can go out there and, and do this program or, or this one.
Do this and this and this and this.
Yep, yep, yep. And we talk about it. You know, if you, you know, get up into high school and have to repeat a class, like...
Yeah, it's a great discussion.
Yeah, that's, it's not gonna work out really well. So that's always a positive for us. Like I said, on February 28th, we went and discussed elective classes with Lincoln, handed out pre-enrollment forms. It's hard to think that that's where we are today. We did pre-enrollment with our seventh and eighth grade students. So we're trying to get prepared for next year. Last Friday, we also had students from the high school come down and discuss, students and teachers, discuss potential electives with the students, FFA, that speech, vocal, Gold Rush. They came down and kind of talked to the kids about, you know, the different electives for the future, so that was great. Upcoming events, tonight is the middle school first baseball game at Hennessy. We have spring pictures tomorrow, and then our first home baseball game is March 10th. So.
Thank you.
Well, the high school has a ton going on. Mrs. Martini made comment about the choir. I didn't put choir on here, but our choirs came away with superior rating. And I do remember performing at contest my eighth grade year, I believe it was, where I sang the verses out of order. And so talk about an opportunity to practice being in front of people and doing it completely wrong, and you just keep going, and Charles Parker just kept playing. So I will, I always remember that one. So anyway, I want to start tonight's report by talking about Greg McClure and his amazing art program. Mr. McClure takes kids all over the state, takes their work all over the state to display it for competition. And recently, he had events entered in the Sutton Center in Bartlesville in their, their art contest. The Sutton Center does a lot of conservation and is big in animal and wildlife conservation and reintroducing different species and herds and things like that. And so our kids competed. This was a first for us. There, there are pieces that come from all over the state. Only 20 entries are allowed into the competition. We had a first place, Campbell Gaspard placed first and came away with some money for it, so that was kind of exciting. And we had some, and his piece was a wood burning of a bald eagle. Lexi Peace had an honorable mention with her bear sculpture. Morgan Vickers had an honorable mention for her leopard drawing. And Brooklyn Murrow received honorable mention for her bear scratchboard. I don't know if you've ever seen a scratchboard art, but it's so fascinating, because it's like a negative, you know? It's dark, and then they scratch it away, and then there's this beautiful piece. So it's, it's really fun. I, I love seeing the work that they do out there, but, you know, to know that only 20 entries are going to be chosen, and we had that many kids come away with a, a place or an honorable mention is huge. So Mr. McClure wanted me to convey how proud he is of, of his students and the program that they have going on. They're working towards their own art show, and so I'm looking forward to that.
How many exhibits did we take?
I'm sorry?
How many exhibits did we take overall?
Well, those, I can't answer that, so I don't know. Yeah. You know, the thing about it is, I'd love for you all to just come by sometime and see what they have going on out in the art room. Madison Blocker has a, a table that they made. It's out of a, a single piece of wood that is all polished up and beautiful, and has some pieces, it's some inset removed, and has some turquoise jewelry, a belt like put through it, and then has an overlay. I mean, it's just gorgeous. They put some cowhide around the, the edges. It's amazing. I mean, it's just gorgeous pieces that they have working out there. And I couldn't do it justice to, to describe it. Come see us, because you, you would love to see their art, and I look forward to their art show. Zoe Hall, we're very excited to recognize Zoe. She's one of our, our bright freshmen. We might know her mother, Heather Hall. But Zoe is incredible. She is quite the little author, and she entered in a poetry contest with the 2025 Right to Win Contest sponsored by the Oklahoma Writing Project. And she, her poem, Evolution of Fear, was chosen for its depth, creativity, and powerful imagery. I mean, just the, the title alone, Evolution of Fear, wow. Zoe is very credible. This is her second year to be chosen in this, this competition, which is quite an honor. Again, very few authors come away with, with even a recognition. So she's now, she is a published author, and not only has she published once, but now she's published twice. So that's very exciting for her. Other things going on, Gold Bug and Lady Bug Basketball, they are doing great things. We are so proud of their hard work and their efforts. They continue on to the area tournament this week. And, you know, we, we can tell how hard they're working looking at their records. Lady Bugs are 22 and 3, and the Gold Bugs are 17 and 9, and they are just putting their all into it. So very proud of both of those, those teams. The Gold Bugs will face Community Christian on Thursday evening. Lady Bugs will face Cassidy on Friday afternoon. So Friday evening. So we're, we're very excited that they're going to have that opportunity. Baseball, we're playing baseball right now. So Mr. Beeler's over at the baseball game. Today was a season opener. Pretty excited that we're having that opportunity. Tonight is also giving to the Greens. So we have a choir concert going on. And when we are finished here, we can just all traipse on over to the choir concert and listen to them perform. National Honor Society induction is tomorrow night. So very excited to get to, to recognize those students. And then we have golf and track also kicking off their seasons. Ag is all over everywhere. We are just, you name it, we've got it going on. Our kids are some busy, busy people, so.
What time is Honor Society pouring?
It is at 6:00.
6:00.
Yes.
Thank you.
You are very welcome.
Thank you. All right. Superintendents report.
Facility-wise, continued upgrading, great problems with our computer network. It was, it's in the neighborhood of a decade old, a lot of hardware and all, all the things. So I think what's happening is we put more pressure on the old stuff. As we do stuff in the system, we just keep having these little failures. Most recently, our DHCP server crashed. That's the server that assigns IP addresses, takes, takes all the data from the internet from that freeway, and so it plugged it into all the people requesting. So DHSP server crashed, we briefly lost internet across the district. Took about a day or so to get everything back. We, we were able to restore the server on a backup that was about 60 days old. And so there were a few little glitches here and there, passwords got changed and some stuff, individuals, but we at least got internet back. Next thing's got us back operational. We have ordered a new server. It should be deployed in the next week or 10 days. So in the meantime, they took one of our old servers and have rebuilt it to be a redundant server. In the event we have another crash, we've got a second redundancy there to, to keep us going. So a lot, a lot of improvements that way that they, it's just hard to see on a daily basis. Pioneer Telephone is going to upgrade their hardware on the fiber ring. All of our, all of our sites are connected with fiber optic. Call it fiber rings, it's a ring in all abilities. Their hardware is eight or nine years old, and it needs to be upgraded. Last spring, well, spring break last year, they were supposed to install them. They ordered new access points, wireless access points for district wire. They haven't, they were never deployed because they won't talk, they won't talk back to the firewall and stuff because of the old hardware that's on the fiber. Okay? Finally got to deal with Pioneer, they're gonna come upgrade all that kind of stuff. It won't cost us anything initially. We will redo the contract at the end of the year from now. The upgrade service will be reflected on that. You redo contracts every five years, and the cost of everything's gone up in five years. Anyway, they're coming to do that, hopefully right before or during spring break. Once that's, once that's done, PKEPTI can come and finish the project of upgrading all the wireless access points across the district. And our wireless network ought to be back in pretty good shape, better than it was before. I spoke with Travis John with Tri-Van Roofing. He'll be in the district next month, I say next month, maybe next week. He was looking for a day. To finalize pricing on the roof project, I talked to Osig, our guy there. He told me all he was waiting on was price. So I went back to Travis, said, man, it's been two years, we just need a price. So I turned the fire up on him a little bit. He's gonna be here next week to get, get all that estimates done, and we can hopefully move forward with that, this roof project. I'd like to see construction on the roof start this summer, early summer, if we get a bulk of that marked out.
That's refreshing, because Osig was kind of the holdup previously, according to the toll, with the challenge. So thank you.
I don't know, I just, I kind of pushed everybody. I had an attorney calling me from Pearson Legal. That was just, I'd probably get three phone calls a week, one is to sue Osig and all this stuff, and it's never a good idea to sue the only insurance company on the insurance.
Sure, the insurance school.
Osig's the only company, the only insurance school on the court. I just thought that was a bad idea to sue them. So it's always better to work things out.
Thank you.
So I kind of pushed everybody back and said, everybody take a breath. And I dug in deep, and just, I wanted to find the path without all the noise, you know? So that's where we're at. It's kind of a legislative update. I wish I could say I've kept up with the Capitol. I think it's impossible to keep up with the Capitol right now. There's a lot of things going on. I would encourage everybody, administrative board members, patrons, stay in touch with your representatives and senators. There's, there's a lot of education stuff out there. Research it. Don't, don't just believe what Channel 4, 5, or 9 tells you. Sure don't believe what Facebook tells you. Research, do your reading, stand up with your, with your legislators. One, one piece of legislation that I do think is going to pass is the cell phone ban. Not 100% sure what that's gonna look like, but I know it's gonna have verbiage in there, and schools will have to have policies to prohibit cell phone use or wireless communication use in the buildings. So I have already started collecting some policies on, district said that with that route, start putting something together. Probably gonna wait to pull the trigger on that, to see what the legislation actually says. I'm sure the host is being able to have some form of recommendation on, to meet all the, check mark all the boxes of that legislation. The way I've kind of started that process, I'll probably get, not probably, we're going to get a committee together, committee, committee next month, within the next month, to look at some policies that we need to update and possibly adopt. Has changed in the last six months or something. Be looking for that. Anyway, legislatively, stay in touch with legislators.
Item requirements or assignments. Items of current business. Item 5.1, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant number one, a non-certified position for the remainder of the fiscal year 25.
Ms. Martini interviewed three or four people for the open custodian position at the middle school. She wanted to offer Grant Duncan a position of middle school custodian. I would recommend, based on your recommendation, to hire Grant Duncan.
Entertained motion?
I move that we hire Grant Duncan as an employee.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item 5.2, discussion with possible board action, vote to enter into a win-win negotiations with the Alba Education Association and the Alba Board of Education for the 26, 25, 26 school year.
It's a little earlier than we normally do that. I spoke with Candy and a couple of people in that committee. The idea is, we wanted to enter negotiations earlier this year, so we can have that done and get that negotiated contract set as we recruit teachers this spring and summer, and coaches and things like that. We can tell them this is what our contract is, number one. And number two, the goal would be have contracts ready and in-service to give teachers, and not, not be into that October stage, where they've already worked for two months before they execute the contract. So we want to enter negotiations now, get that knocked out for next year, and everybody move forward.
That's an idea. Motion to approve that recommendation?
Send me.
Second.
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes. Item number 5.3, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a contract with the Oklahoma Mental Health and Substance Abuse for the 24, 25 school year.
This is just a memorandum of understanding that would allow Northwest Mental Health to come into our buildings and provide counseling for our kids. Several kids already have their services. This allows them to come into our, our school during the day to provide us counseling services.
Is this the same as before?
It's, it's the same one that we approved a year ago.
And it has worked well with the client that I received, yes.
Ms. Williams, last she brought to me, so.
Yeah, that guy that served students at Washington, and they reached out this year, and that's how we discovered, and he was reading this, so.
We, we. I would make the motion that we accept the, approve the contract with Oklahoma Mental Health and Substance Abuse for the 24, 25.
Second.
McDermott?
So that's for this year? So this is kind of retroactive?
I think they haven't done anything yet, so it's gonna start as soon as you guys.
I think they've got a couple of kids they need to get in service.
They're needing to meet with, and they have contracted places.
So we need to get a contract in place if they can.
It's one that expired at the end of February, so.
Oh, they did money.
Yeah.
Got it, okay. Um...
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item number 5.4, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an Alba State travel request from the Alba FFA.
They are waiting to go to a live song judging contest in Lyons, Kansas.
I move that we approve the Alba State travel request from the Alba FFA.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.[1775.34]
I move that we approve the Alba State travel request from the Alba FFA.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Items of new business. We have a proposed executive session to discuss the renewal of contracts for following principles for fiscal year 26. Becky Nishfonger, Alba High School, Dalton Neeler, Alba High School and AMS Assistant. Stephanie Martini, Alba Medical, Alba Medical School.
Oh, right.
Alba Medical School. We look great in that, John. Jenny Webster, Lincoln Elementary. Allison Tucker, Longfellow Elementary. Madison Williams, Washington Elementary. Per Oklahoma State Statute 25, 307B1. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yes, so move.
Second.
Double second.